All right, we're gonna get started. This is a regular scheduled board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Gabbard.
Here.
Mrs. Ashcraft.
Present.
Mr. Messerschmidt.
Present.
Mr. Pressler.
Here.
Mr. York.
Present.
Would you please stand for the pledge and remain standing? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Lord and gracious master heaven and father, we bow before you today, thankful for the many blessings, Lord, for friends and family, father, for the time you've enjoyed. And Lord, as we come to you today, we certainly appreciate those that have a heart to serve, Lord, father, and know that they come with the interest of our children, our students, our grandchildren. Lord, God, we would ask tonight that you would guide them. Time to hear, Lord, father, that you grant to them the wisdom they need, the patience, Lord. As always, we ask you to be with those who travel these hallways, day by day, Lord. God, watch over, protect, direct, and follow. We ask for those especially during this season that need just a little more help. God, just bless each one, as we please and honor you. We pray in the name of Jesus, Hesey. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. This time, I'm gonna look for a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Mr. York, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. You can turn around if you want to, but those are computers.
You guys wanna go down today? I don't want down.
Yeah, I'd rather down.
Is there any discussion as part of this, or?
Just a quick presentation.
Okay. Is this the same as what's, I'm looking at the slides. Is this the same as what's in the five-year forecast and agenda?
It is on here, yes.
Okay.
So I wanna start by thanking everyone that has come. I've been out in the buildings, kinda talking to some of our staff. I've not made it to every building yet. But I wanted to share tonight with you the five-year forecast that I'm presenting to the board for approval. I'm gonna try to not take too long here, ten minutes or so. They say that you lose the attention span after seven, so I'm gonna try to make this pretty quick here. First, I wanna kinda enlighten you as to what a five-year forecast is. The first and foremost reason we present this is so that our community, our parents, all of the stakeholders can engage with this board and so that you have an idea of our long-range planning and financial issues that the district is facing. It also serves as a basis for determining our ability to sign the four twelve certificate. If you've sat in meetings with me before, you've heard me say we need to be able to certify. This is contracts we've negotiated out and different certificates you have to have when you file your appropriations. Looking at the current fiscal year projected financial analysis, we think our general fund revenues are gonna be about forty-two point three million dollars. Expenditures this year, we're projecting to be forty-one point six million dollars. We think right now, and this is based on what we know today, we think we'll come out a little bit better than six hundred thousand dollars, more in revenues than what we anticipate spending. I also wanna throw out there, well, I'm here, this is the first time since 2019 that this has actually happened and we've had a positive year. What we're contributing to this, we've made a lot of budget cuts. You know, we've got the property tax revenues that are going to increase, also seeing more money from the fair school funding plan. So that's where we think we're gonna land, they call it over-under, for this fiscal year. Almost, okay. You can see here, this is a little pie chart here, just shows you about fifty-five percent of our revenues for the general fund come from state funding. Thirty-eight percent comes from the tax dollars. Seven percent is other revenues. This is made up for monies that we might get from interest, from our bank accounts. Tuition for non-resident students goes into that little pot. Also, things like we have the atrium medical building and their lease payment also goes into that smallest portion there of revenues as well. For the local taxes overall, about fifteen million there. State funding is a little better than twenty-three million, and then that other revenue is just a little bit more than three million. Now, I'm gonna focus on expenditures here, and it's no secret, you know, the biggest piece of our revenue is contributed to salaries and benefits. It's a little bit better than seventy-nine percent. We ran about eighty-two percent last fiscal year. We have, you know, like I said, with budget cuts and whatnot, been able to reduce this just a little bit. We've also seen a slight increase in our purchase services, and this again contributed to the fact that we're having to contract for some of the services that we've had to reduce from salaries. Physicians we can't fill and things like that. And then those other projected expenditures, supplies, capital, that's gonna be about three million dollars and about seven percent of our budget from general fund.
I got a hard question. I don't know if you noticed off the top of your head. But that seventy-nine percent, isn't it typically around the eighty-five percent or something?
A lot of school districts are right at eighty-five percent. We came in a little better than eighty-two last year. We've, we've made some significant cuts, but again, this is not just because of those cuts. As you've heard us talking before, we got school psych physicians. We can't fill them. We're having to contract out occupational therapy. A counselor we're contracting for. So this isn't completely contributed to our budget cuts.
Diesel mechanic that we can hire.
Yeah, we have a lot of physicians.
Because our salaries are lower than the average cost. You can't recruit and bring people in, so that's not a good thing.
So that, again, that's why that purchase service has continued to increase because we're having to contract outside to fill some of that. Looking across at twenty-four through twenty-eight, and again, our forecast shows three years of actual, and then you do your current year and four additional years. If you focus on the darker blue color there, that's our revenues. That lighter color is our expenditures. You can see that we're, we're about there. We're just barely inching over that. Like I said, we think we're gonna be about six hundred thousand to the good. Next year, we go complete opposite of that, and we're gonna be about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars negative. Again, this is based on the information that we have today. Any kind of additional inflation that we can account for or any major expenses that we just don't know about. Obviously, we can't account for that. This is based on what we know today. But this year, we come out to the good. Next year, we're about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, spending more than what we receive in revenue. You can see that trend just continues, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So highlighting out three years, and that's about as far as I like to go because there are so many unknowns. About even in that fiscal year of twenty-six, our net loss that year is gonna be about one point four million. By that fifth year out, our net loss is closer to four million dollars.
Is that including the substitute renewal? You're gonna talk about it.
Yeah, I'm getting there. So our historical annual revenue change has been about one point four four percent. We're now building up, again, due to property tax, as well as then changing the inputs for fair school funding from 2018 to 2022. We're going up to about three, almost three point one percent there. So that increase in revenue is going up about one point six four percent. You look over at the expenditures, we're going up about two point seven seven percent in expenditures. So even though our revenues are going up, they're not keeping up with those expenditures. We're gonna exceed in our expenditures what we're getting in revenue. This here is our calendar days cash on hand. The GFOA recommends that no one ever go below sixty days cash on hand. If you look back where we were just before COVID, we had about a hundred and forty days cash on hand. We did not deficit spend that year. That was a positive year, but immediately after, we started. We can contribute some of this to COVID. I mean, there are so many things affecting this. But we had, just when COVID started, ninety-five days cash on hand. You look at fiscal year twenty-four, with the excess in revenues that we're getting, we're about seventy-seven days cash on hand. Next year, even though we're gonna spend a little more than we get, we're still about sixty-nine days cash on hand. That third year, we fall to fifty-five days cash on hand. So again, twenty-twenty, we were excess spending what we received in revenue, close to four million dollars. That twenty-nineteen, we were seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars to the good. The year before that, we were also deficit spending three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So that twenty-nineteen, I don't know what happened in that year. That was a good year for us. But you can see, it's just, it's continued to go down. One thing that plays into this, and it's really important because we're, we're funded from our student enrollment. Right now, we are down a hundred and forty-one kids from where we were last year. I'm getting a lot of questions, why is that? We can't contribute all of it to this. I feel like a lot of kids didn't come back from COVID. We've seen our homeschool numbers go up. Also with Ed Voucher, Ed Choice, the vouchers and things like that, we've got a lot of kids opting for that and choosing to be educated at home or in other placements. And the parents can actually apply to the state and get monies from the state. So these, these vouchers are really hurting us as well, but I, I want you to be aware of this. And you'll see out there in twenty-five, twenty-six, I only have a projected loss of seven students each year. I'm hoping that this turns around. We're gonna continue to watch it. We look at this, we get numbers every month. This year, so far, the months, they've kinda stayed steady. We had that big drop in the beginning. Our numbers have stayed steady each month this year. But again, this is something we're gonna watch because our enrollment is huge for funding. I've blown this up here, and I, I hope it's good enough where you can see it. But again, the first three years, like I said, you have actual numbers there so you can see what our total revenues were down there in that green line. So last year, we ended in our revenues were thirty-seven point seven million. This year, they're gonna be forty-one point four million, or that's at least what we're expecting it to be. And again, you can see that that grows a little bit each year, or next year, and then the following year, it starts to fall. If you take a look up there at that very top line, one point oh one oh, you'll see that that revenue is going down. The reason being, we have that substitute that falls off. I'm not banking on that in this line. We don't know if we're gonna have that or not. So again, basing on what we know today, we anticipate that the revenue will fall probably a million dollars there in that twenty-twenty-six and continue to do so unless we would renew that substitute. Again, here are the expenditures, and you can see, you're just highlighting that bottom row there. This year, we think we're gonna spend forty-one point two. Next year, forty-three. The following year, forty-four, eight. Again, you can see our expenditures just continue. A lot of this is inflation. I mean, everything is just going up, so the expenditures will go up. That over-under and the cash balance that I talked about, if you look just to the right, that line there, that's six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, that's where I think that we're gonna land positive this year. Just under that, you can see our cash balance coming into this year was eight million two hundred thousand. We think it's gonna be eight million eight hundred thousand, that bottom line there, this year. But again, like I said, continue looking out. Next year, we will overspend more than we receive by about six hundred and fifty thousand, and that bottom line always carries up. So where are you in one year, you start the next. If we have something catastrophic that happens this year, or maybe some revenue comes in, maybe we get someone's inheritance or something like that. Again, it just projects out into each year thereafter. So there is a compounding effect to this, so just so you know that. To the next one. We talk often about these certificate of appropriations. Just filed that a couple of months ago. I will probably file a revision for this in January, just to kinda fine-tune where we're at. We have to send this to the county, and basically, again, this is so that we're not planning to spend money that we don't have. They watch that. You tell them what you have and where you're spending it. They certify it and send it back. So again, those come to the board for approval. We'll probably update this because we've had some changes to our expenses as well, just since we filed a couple of months ago. Again, if you look down there at the bottom, that sum balance, if you look in the double yellow line where you see the one five hundred thousand nine sixty-seven, that equates to that first year where that substitute falls off. So without that renewal, that is the dollar amount on the renewal for twenty-six. You can see the year after, four million, the compounding effect, four million five oh two, compounding on out to that last year of seven and a half million dollars. So again, I, I don't like to go out into that fifth year instead, but this is, serves as a good planning tool so we see where we're headed. This is just a summary here. Again, that dark line there, that's our total revenues. You can see this year, barely inching over. Next year, we're gonna fall a little bit short. The fourth set of bars out there with that salmon or peach color, again, that represents that substitute. We're not counting any now. We could, but what I wanna point out here is, even if we get that substitute, you see where our expenditures are in that light gray? It, it's still not enough. So again, we, we have to figure out how we're gonna make this work in our budget. And that was my last slide. Again, I just, I just wanna say, this data is based on what we know today. We can't predict inflation and things like that in expenditures, but this is what we know as of today. It's just now, what are we gonna do with it? So if you have any questions?
Is, is any of that Rocky Pipeline money figured out on any of this?
I have asked and asked and asked, and you can see, I'm gonna back up to this slide. We know that they're probably going to grant in their favor. I have that here on one of these. Yeah, so in that second line, one point oh two oh, you can see how that's fallen off there. We just don't know. I've, I've asked Mike Stein, I asked him again a couple of weeks ago down at the county. They haven't heard anything new. I'm hoping that this settles here soon. They have settled Nexus, so I'm hoping that it settles and, and we get a, a windfall from this. We don't anticipate we're gonna get the whole out, no. If we get, you know, maybe seventy percent of that, I think that's what they said the Nexus settled for. We'll eventually get it. Do I think it's gonna be enough to take care of this? Half a million dollars is not gonna do it.
So going back to the, going back to the levy, I, I remember we had a conversation. There's a bond levy that falls off, right?
Yes.
When does that fall off?
So I got an email back from bond council, and I did email that. I forwarded that to you guys this weekend. Did you see an email from me this weekend? So that's when it'll fall off. We could go on the ballot next year for that. There's an opportunity in March, as well as the presidential election in November. We could also wait and go that following May. If, as long as we would pass that, the revenue would continue, and we won't lose any money if we wanna wait and try to do that. Again, this is a planning tool, even with that substitute, that's not going to make the forecast so that we're not deficit spending.
So, so what I was, I was talking about the bonds that we're gonna build to school with, right?
That's supposed to fall off what year?
Twenty twenty-five.
I'll have to look it up.
Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I was talking about the, the school, the.
Okay.
The facility funds.
I'll have to look that up. I, I've got that.
So, and then the, the renewal for the operating levy was, is that, that's twenty-five?
That's the substitute, yes.
That's twenty-four?
We need to renew by twenty-five to not lose any funds for that. We can go on the ballot. That's what he told me this weekend. We can go on the ballot in the calendar year twenty-four, but we could also wait until May. As long as it passes, we won't, we won't see any lost time in receiving that revenue.
But we would, actually, that's, we'd still have to pass something. Like, that's not, that's only gonna buy us just a little bit of time.
I, I kinda feel like that would do basically what? The additional revenues from the property tax and the fair school funding. It gives us a minute to breathe, that's what I say. It's, it's not gonna take care of this deficit, no.
Also, this deficit does not address the needs around mental health, the needs that we're short-staffed, the needs that we're not being competitive with our salaries, and we're losing employees to neighboring districts. We need to get ahead of this.
How do you recommend we get ahead of this?
Pass the levy.
I think what we need to do is find out the exact date the bond falls off, share information with our community when the renewal falls off. And I think we need a whole different percentage calculating what, I just shared what our needs are, and share that that won't be, hopefully, that much more money with the bond and the renewal off. But it's most likely will be a different ticket.
That substitute and what, what we're referring to as a renewal, they keep telling me, don't call that a renewal. It's not a renewal, it's a substitute. That falls off in twenty-five. The way that they collect, when they collect it, we would still get some money from that in the first half of twenty-six. That's why when you look at that slide, you're only seeing that one point five million.
But is it fair to, to go with a model just to breathe to our students? Or, or do we need to look at something that we can be competitive in our programming as well as our staffing? And if so, what would that look like and when?
Yeah, and, and we have some other technology needs that are coming up. The two bigger purchases out in twenty-six and twenty-seven, they're built into this forecast. But I just got new information today that's not in here. I would say that's probably, I don't know, a few hundred thousand. We, we have needs.
Gary, you asked what the plan would be. I think the plan is to have a work session, get the exact dollars of what our needs are, and when our, our renewal and bond fall off. And then I would say, communicate, 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 and then go out for the presidential election on a revised plan with those two items off.
You're saying in November ballot, right?
Yeah, with the old, with the old ones off.
Right, with the old ones off, with a new one. Saying if this passes, you know, this is off this date, this is off this date, and this is our, our, what we're asking for, our mileage we're asking for.
Thank you, Pam. That's very informative.
Do you wanna ask, have any questions?
Not all these questions with such great news. That's a conversation. That's sort of, in the conversation.
All right. You're still up, Mrs. Bowers? It looks like a little bit more to treasure, right? I don't have anything for public participation.
So I would like to ask for a motion to approve the board minutes from the October twenty-third meeting.
I need a motion for the regular board minutes from October twenty-third. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Next, I would like to ask a motion to approve the financial reports as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the financial reports as presented. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler?
Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Yeah, we, discussion on this?
Yeah. So purchase orders over ten thousand dollars? The Synovia Solutions GPSs for buses?
Yes. So the biggest part of this, let me say, is going to come from that five ninety-nine, the OFCC safety grant. One thing about this, it has to be split between all five buildings. We know we have used the safety grant monies from the high school for the safety film. So I'm working on recoding some things there so that we can split that across all five buildings. But this is something, Pam can probably speak to this. Do you wanna talk about this a little bit, what this is gonna do?
Sure. When we applied for the OFCC grant funds, we had to ask for permission to pull funds in order to be able to do the bus GPSs because there's no way to particularly assign a bus to a school and not affect, you know, our buses' travel between buildings. So we had to pull the funds. So at one point, we were talking about, yes, this is definitely a direction we wanna go, be able to support our students, our families, provide a greater sense of safety and security. But we have to put an equal amount from each building. So we went to go through the process, and some of the funds had already been in Cumberland. Even though we knew this GPS was coming down the pipe, it was just a matter of going through the bids and reviewing the products and selecting what we were gonna finally end up with. So we had to kind of move some funds of amount in general, I guess, in order to be able to allow for the.
Can you talk more about what this system actually does, though?
Sure. This is, we look at three different systems. This one is the mid-priced system that we could get. It actually provides not only the app with the GPS to be able to track so families can get a notification, and they can watch on their phone and know when their student's about to arrive home so that they're notified. It also allows down the road the opportunity, if we decide to instill this feature, that we can track students with their badges, if they got on said bus, if they got off the bus. We're gonna be able to track the safety checks that staff do, and not all have this feature, the safety checks that the bus trackers do on the buses, and be able to document the need for repairs, et cetera, more easily. So they'll go through the whole check on the bus on a tablet that comes as part of this. So we'll be able to look at that element. We're gonna be able to track where the buses are. So in transportation, we had a test model from another company that we would watch. And Shane said he enjoyed watching the bus because he could see where they are in real time and know where that bus was. If something came up somewhere along the line, we would know where that bus was located. If it was broken down, if there was an accident, so they'd notify us. If there was a medical emergency, and for some reason, the bus was just not where it was expected, we would be able to track that down. So it's got a lot of really great features. We had a team of four of us look at the different, the three different proposals. And then we kind of looked at the financial aspect of it. This one is just like purchasing curriculum. So you pay X amount of money, and you pretty much did everything with, like, warranty and the service and everything for five years. Whereas one of them was not this good of a product. And one was gonna be substantially overpriced. We would be paying an annual fee as well as taking out the OFCC funds. So this allows us to provide five years with just the OFCC funds. But we'll be able to see where the buses are, assign drivers. If the bus breaks down mid-day, we can reassign that bus. And you would know that bus thirty-four was bringing your child home instead of bus point five that would normally be there. So it's got a lot of really nice features.
So the price tag on this hundred two thousand, how much of that is grant money? And how much are we paying for that?
About eighty-one thousand. Now, like I said, we had thirty thousand in Cumberland at the high school that I'm, I'm working on recodings. And it has to be split five ways, so about twenty thousand will need to come from the high school. But we also think we might have ten thousand dollars back from St. Ross today.
So a hundred percent of the GPS is being funded by grants?
No, but ninety percent of us. No, but ninety percent of us.
So eighty-one thousand is grant money? I thought you said eighty-one thousand was our money?
Oh, no, 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 eighty-one thousand will be grant money.
And then possibly another ten?
Well, I understand, we, we think we have a little, a little refund coming back from Savas. That's ten thousand dollars positive we weren't expecting, so I might just have to look for ten thousand dollars. But what this does and the safety, it will provide, it's worth ten thousand dollars.
Since we're talking safety, I, I don't want to get too far off topic here, but somebody approached me about AEDs and maybe for the next board meeting, would like to have that work in with the agenda to talk about the availability of AEDs in our buildings to include field house, sporting events, things of that nature.
Can we just box some?
Yeah, we wrote, I wrote a grant, um, this partial coverage grant, we just received three portable AEDs, um, that are down at Field House with the trainer to be certified. And they're to be used for extracurriculars, some of our teams that go to places like, I think Brown's Run doesn't have an AED at the golf course, and we send our golfers there all the time. So we did just get three new ones. Um, that's a pretty easy process that we can look at if there's discussion about unit additional, there's options and there's opportunities out there, I can work on that, too.
But there are already AEDs in this building?
Several.
And you can find out where they are.
By law.
If you look at the floor plan, it probably will identify where they are. So all people, people have to do is look at that right there, and I'll say, oh, I got a guy who needs an AED. Uh, Miss York needs an AED, he'll grab it next door.
So prior, prior to getting those three, did we have them down at Cumberland?
We have one, at least one, maybe two down at the field that I know of. Um, we do have them on-site down there. The idea of getting the portable ones is to be able to use them like if marching band needs to have one out at the field with them while they're practicing, you know what I mean, that, that kind of thing. So my conversations with Scott Clemmons and our trainer were working through what that system looks like as far as checking them out, how many, who has them, where they are, all of that kind of stuff. So we're, we're working on that, but like I said, we can, we can look into options to get more. Um, we started with three, thought that was a good starting point to have some extras on hand. Um, but they are, who has those?
I appreciate that explanation, that was actually a question I was just asked in the past couple of weeks. So I appreciate the clarification.
I have one more question here about the six, seven, the seventy, seven thousand dollars for the safety officers. Was that a one-time event that we use them or?
That is actually our attendance officer, and I don't know why the ESC calls her a safety officer, but yeah, there are, um, within a period of getting placed at the beginning of the year. But that's, we share her with other districts.
Good enough, thank you. Any more discussion? Yes, sir. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a rule, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Our motion carries five zero. Next I would like for a motion to approve the five-year forecast as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the five-year forecast as presented. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft? It's already went over, is there any more questions?
Or you mentioned, you mentioned workers, Kelly, for five-year forecast and levies and strategy and?
The work session, I think we need a work session on that.
Any idea on when we're going to do that?
Well, I would like to put a work session together if the board is in agreement in January, since we have a new board member, maybe do some orientation in a way that we've not done, just because we're going to have an interaction with a new person. We could add it to that, um, and have a two-hour work session, maybe forty-five minutes on orientation, or however long you want it, and get into when, strategizing for our levy. I guess the question would be, when will we have that information together? I think it's going to be hard to do it earlier than that just because of everyone's holiday schedules. But I'm open anytime.
We're not thinking anything any sooner than November of twenty-four?
I'm not, but if the board is, we, we would want to get it together sooner than that.
I think that's probably a pretty good target, in my opinion.
I just, I think presidential elections, school levy yet, just like that's going to make it way more challenging to pass it.
Based on our historical data?
Well, historically, we're going to fail it how many times? Two or three at least?
I just think it would be difficult to put it on, I mean, I would, I wouldn't propose putting it on this, is it, is there a ballot May?
It would be in twenty-four, it's March and November, and then next year is May.
We decided today.
We can wait till May, by twenty-five.
We can still go in May.
It wouldn't cost us, I mean, we wouldn't lose any money. I think the way it's, we would still get money the first half of twenty-six is what I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we wouldn't, hers, we went May and then back in November if it didn't pass. We can talk about it.
But I think what he's saying is we want a work session earlier, December instead of January.
Well, I don't think there's any way we can go in March.
Yeah, if we can't go in March, then I don't think there's any reason to do that.
I think we would look like we're not together, yeah. We need more planning time.
Yeah, I think March would be tough.
I think our comments from the last, um, levy was that, you know, we told people we weren't sure about how that renewal would impact if the levy passed or not. They want real evidence of, is this going to be more or not? So this is in lieu of, we need to be very clear about that. We need to be very clear of what we're going to purchase with those additional dollars. Where that gap is, where she showed that salmon color, even if the renewal, excuse me, the substitute passed, we're still short of spending, and that's not even including our needs above and beyond that. So I think we need to be very clear of what, what those needs are, how much they cost. If, if the substitute would pass, what we would be short and what we would have to cut. Um, we need to be very clear with all of that. I think it's going to take a whole time to plan. I don't, I think March is too soon, that's just my humble opinion.
I do, I mean, we need to make sure we get everything out there.
But if we need to get one on the work session, I could get one planned as soon as you want it.
I think, I think January is probably good.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
We have two in January.
Could.
Yeah. We'll do, we'll do that with the orientation, which has to be within the first ten days of January.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a rule, please?
Can I ask Mr. York a question?
Real quick.
Are you going to miss us during this?
Yes.
We're going to miss him, too.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Our motion carries five zero. Next I would like to ask for a motion to approve the payment in lieu of request.
Looking for a motion for the payment in lieu of request. So, Mr. Pressler, uh, second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Any discussion?
It doesn't say what the actual dollar amounts are on here.
It's like five hundred and eighty-three dollars and some change what they can get. It doesn't get paid out until the end of the year. We verify their attendance at that school before we pay it.
How do we determine this, just curious? I mean, how do we say that these particular individuals?
It's impractical. So for example, we have a student that's going to Cincinnati Christian School. We don't have the means to accommodate that without paying an extra driver or extra time. Um, so it's deemed impractical, and it makes more sense to pay the parent the five hundred and eighty dollars for their commute.
Are these the only two students that go to those two schools?
That's the only, yes, that we have right now, yeah. If we had other students there, no question, would we take them?
Yeah, that, that's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call a rule, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Yes. Mr. York?
Yes.
Our motion carries five zero. Uh, next I would like to ask for a motion to approve the Apple IMAC quote.
Looking for a motion to approve that Apple IMAC quote. So, Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt? Obviously, Mr. Ken had done this. So, this is the best deal we could get?
Yeah, uh, we took quotes from Dell, a company called Regency, um, for kind of comparable machines. We also looked at another Mac model, maybe, uh, you know, but actually the, uh, the IMACs ended up being the cheapest. Um, the reason these machines need a little more power is because they're doing like digital art and rendering and graphics and stuff like that. Um, so it just requires a little more than a Chromebook to move. Um, so these are a little higher-powered computers. Uh, but I did get, you know, four or five quotes, and actually the IMAC ended up being the cheapest one.
So these are just specific for the, the, the art class?
Yeah.
Do they have, do they have machines now that were life cycling or?
Yeah, uh, so the current machines they're using are actually ten years old now, they were purchased in twenty thirteen. Um, so they've made it ten years, think about it like that, it's actually six thousand dollars a year, you know? Uh, hypothetically, these may get the same amount of time as the three, and they're the exact same, they're IMACs. So there's pretty good reason to believe they might get another ten years out of these.
The web's have done a tremendous job, I can't believe how long these make these sense, computers last in C-. Hey, currently it takes kids fifteen, twenty minutes to log into a computer. So there's tons of lost instruction time. They're using Adobe and it's a very deeply embedded platform.
Zach, did Apple ever, uh, say anything about their lease and purchase program?
Uh, I, I got these quotes off the website just for purchase, I did not, uh, I'm not exploring lease option, uh, we deserve to do that.
Well, the, the positive for that is they, they don't charge interest, and you can spread your payments out over three or four years, so you don't, you don't put out sixty thousand dollars at one time. You do it twelve thousand a, a year and hurts your bottom, or helps your bottom line. If they are still doing that, they used to, they used to do that pre-regularly, so. It really helps when it's a huge purchase.
Are there any software requirements that we don't have included in this?
The, no, I mean, are you saying this, like this would meet our requirements for, for the software, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, these are, yeah, these are well-suited for the program.
That's what I'm asking industry needs.
We have an Adobe, we use Adobe's online.
Adobe, yeah.
We used to buy and have to renew it all the time, now we virtually, it's an online version that we continually, in essence, it's kind of like we do.
I'm, I'm not a computer guy, so I was just asking, is there any other costs associated with this that maybe we're not?
No, that's actually what bumped the other models out of price, is that they would need monitors. These IMACs come with monitors built in, they're all one unit. So that's actually what made them the cheapest option, was that they were all self-contained.
Sounds good.
Uh, one of the benefits, too, is that if these kids go out into the professional world and do this, this machine is what they'll be using when they get out there.
Yes, it was.
So it really helps them to get a jump ahead of everybody.
Good. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a rule, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Our motion carries five zero. Uh, next is SMS agreement, um, this is through E-Rate. Um, this is something that we do every year, and we get rebates back, um, for things like our servers. Um, what's the other thing?
It's, uh, all the networking, so all the wireless APs, all the switching, any wireless connects, like, all the networking stuff. Um, and our current discount rate is eighty percent, so we get eighty percent off any networking equipment in emergency.
Yes.
Is this a monthly cost, is that how that works?
No, it's an annual fee, uh, and then we just get rebates back from them on whatever we buy. I think we were at sixty or seventy percent, but I'm not sure if you've heard me say that our free and reduced just went beyond fifty percent. Now we're eligible for an eighty percent rebate.
So is there a dollar amount on here, 'cause I'm serious, I don't see it.
We don't have it yet.
Is this what we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let me get a motion on this SMS agreement.
I thought we did, I guess we didn't do it.
I don't think we did. So, Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Miss, Miss Ashcraft? Okay. Carry on.
I was supposed to say like it's IMAC, yes. We do this every year.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea what this costs, I, I don't see a dollar amount on here.
Let me see if I can find it.
The fees and payment, yeah.
Yeah, it's on page one.
So very first one. Very first one, there's two, I got two files, which one?
Both of them are staying, they're just different.
Yeah, it's E-Rate one and two.
Whatever you're looking for.
No, that's the Apple.
Gotcha.
That's normal photo and something about what it costs.
I can tell you we get thousands more back than what it costs.
Then we get eighty percent return?
It's a rebate program, yes.
I believe it's an eighty percent return.
So for example, like in our meeting today, Zach, what is, we're getting fifty-nine thousand dollar worth of equipment for eleven thousand dollars?
Yeah, it was, it was roughly, I mean, for what I budgeted for this year, it'd be roughly sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment for eleven thousand. Um, it's a, it's a pretty substantial. I think, I think the E-Rate price, or the SMS pricing, they have two tiers of pricing. It's either like percentage based, based on how much we spend, or there's a flat fee. And I want to say that flat fee is between three and five thousand.
That's what I'm thinking.
I just, I haven't any idea.
Yeah, that's still not the number I'm seeing in here, but if, if that's what it is.
Like that one purchase alone is going to save us forty thousand dollars, we, we don't pay. I'm, I'm thinking it's right at thirty-five.
Yeah, is this something we have to boot on? I, I just would like to see a price before I put it on, what the, what the cost is.
The alternative is?
It's seventy, it's seventy-five hundred, I have it right here, seventy-five hundred dollars.
The alternative is that we have somebody on our staff write these E-Rate agreements, and it takes somebody, not that we don't have people that knows what they're doing, but it takes a lot of time. We, we would almost have to hire a person full-time to do these kind of things. And so the, the consulting companies that do these things are really saving us a lot of money.
They know the latest, um, ins and outs. For a fact, at the last Swoke meeting, I was at, when I was asking the question about, are we timely with our E-Rate requests? And where we stood, and they were like, they looked up the information, they said, oh, you have one of the best consultants in the house. That's good at this, so.
I know, I know that because we used to do it ourselves, and it was.
And I remember that.
Yeah.
But if I'm listening at home to this.
And we leave money on the table.
If I'm listening at home to this conversation and the school board's up there, but we don't know how much it costs, I mean, I'm kind of.
I have it, the category one's five thousand and that cat two is twenty-five hundred. So it's seventy-five hundred dollars, but like I said, this one purchase that we talked about today, we're getting for eleven thousand dollars, that would be fifty-nine thousand dollars without the E-Rate.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the explanation, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a rule, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbert?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Our motion carries five zero. Uh, next I would like to block items G, H, and I. Um, we have a donation, uh, from the Huffington Remaps, it is two gift cards, fifty dollars each monthly. Uh, this is to help Mrs. Lyman with the program she's trying to do to, um, attend, attendants at Santa Rosa High School. The second one is a donation of five hundred dollars for students' basketball activity fee. And the third one is a donation of three Chromebooks, um, from a grandparent to the middle school.
That's very nice.
Yes.
I'm going to look for a motion to. I'm going to look for a motion to approve the three donations. So, Mr. Messerschmidt, Mrs. Ashcraft? Any discussion? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes. Yes.
My motion carries five zero.
This is a little story where she's looking up the next information. The family, that's anonymous, that donated the three Chromebooks attended the middle school veterans program where there were some delays due to technology. And they were so impressed with the program but unimpressed with our equipment, they, within an hour, turned around and sent yours through.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Last thing is informational items. And I just put our basic financial statements on there. We just got our GAAP report finished. Working on finishing up our state audit. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers.
You're welcome.
You're being right along. All right, I have just a few items. I would like to go ahead and propose approval for six A and B. Those two items. A is a field trip, overnight wrestling trip for a competition taking place. And then, item B, anytime there is a request for supplemental material use, they need to use this process. And so, you have information before you on the request of animal farm by George Forewell that depicts animals to portray real-life situation on some violence. And it includes a tyranny to take over the farm. There's also some reference to, as I said, some violence. And so, because of that, they're, they're asking for our approval. I would like to just say that anytime a parent disagrees with such a supplemental piece or any piece, they can ask for an alternative assignment. So, I'm asking for approval by the six A and B.
I'm looking for an approval of the field trip and the animal farm book. So, Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? So, it's the pigs that are taking over, right?
That's right.
I read this book when I was, when I was at middle school. What's the head pig's name? The bull in?
Oh, really? I haven't read the book. I was, I was quite interested by.
That's impressive.
By the references.
I'm surprised, I was surprised. I looked at this earlier and I'm surprised that we weren't already reading it.
That's kind of why we make sure anytime we discover that, Mr. York, we did about four or five years ago where we had some books that I realized teacher were wanting to read or implement with their kids. We didn't really have this process in place. So, I can't say that, you know, maybe that book hadn't been read here or there over the years. But at any rate, we know now that it's going to be read more regularly.
Thank you. Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
My motion carries five zero.
The next item is informational. And it's item six C, our child nutrition standards. Annually, I need to bring before the board what those standards are. And we just, in case you have any discussion of them, but it's all part of what I have to turn into the Ohio Department of Education, which is now Department of Education management or something like that. Basically saying that we need the standards and we have to discuss them at the board. And that's what we're seeing before you this evening. Again, it's strictly informational and you've probably seen these very same documents for several years. Any questions on our child nutrition standards? Okay, my informational items this evening, just wanted to bring before you just some legislation to watch, keep your eye on. Senate Bill 162 is being discussed right now that could be costly to our district. It's mandating academic intervention in math, which would involve intervention courses, could involve summer school. It could involve more materials. So, it's a perfect example of legislation that mandates things we do in schools. Can't say it's not good. I hope like we're doing that anyway, but it could come with some costs. So, keep your eye on Senate Bill 162. And then, of course, House Bill 187. As you know, we've been talking about property tax and the possibility of increase and what that's going to look like for each jurisdiction. But there is a property tax relief bill and our legislators are saying it could look very different. And I'm thinking, what does that mean? So, that is House Bill 187.
So, what does that mean?
I don't know. I have no idea. They're looking to redo the formula or something. They're saying, just keep your eye on it and watch it because they're discussing what that could look like to provide relief for our community.
Before they do that, collect it and die?
After we've planned our five-year forecast and we had a failed levy because the information went out the day of our levy? Yes. So, anyway, I doubt it's going to change too much. But I think what's happening is enough people have complained that they are putting new legislation out on that. So, if I say anything, I'll share. And it's just saying strictly that.
Maybe they'll start a new budget provides that.
Would like to talk a little bit about engagement. As you're aware, we have a community engagement that's been looking at community survey information. At our last meeting, they identified communication, relationships around just engagement opportunities to get together and recognition as opportunities of growth for our district. Now, that doesn't mean anything other than that. What's going to happen is we'll take that information back to our leadership team after several groups chime in to what those opportunities are and just basically review our strategic plan to say, how does this align to our current strategic plan? Do we need to revise our vision and our strategic mission statement? Now, I shared this with our student leadership group the Friday before break, the Thanksgiving break. They disagreed that recognitions needed. They think we do a great job on recognizing people. But they do feel, and it's interesting, the three words they came up with are exactly around our, our words that we use about that we want everyone to show respect, responsibility, and be safe. Make safe decisions for yourself and others. And safety seemed to be something that they wanted to focus on. And it had more to do with our students getting the same information that the community and parents receive in a timely fashion around our lockdown drills. So, we had healthy conversations on that. I thought that was interesting. So, they felt as if when information comes from the outside, a parent texting going, are you okay? We just got a message here on the lockdown and all they know is they're on the lockdown, but they don't know why. They just want to get the same information everybody else has. So, I thought that was a bit, that bit of information. There's always healthy conversations. Mr. Gaggen's there with me and they take this seriously. I'll tell you. They looked at the student data as far as the feedback provided. They identified some areas and they broke up into groups around certain themes and gave us feedback on each of them. So, we'll continue with those conversations. We will be meeting with our leadership team on Wednesday to go through this data and to identify opportunities for growth. I'll be meeting with our faculty advisory committee as well as our OC team to get additional information. Our goal is to come back in January with the leadership, kind of decipher that and then, bring it back to the community again in February. My goal is by spring, we'll have a revised strategic plan. But these conversations have been healthy and certainly informative to us, just to see where people, you know, what they're thinking. My last piece of information is you've probably heard the tragic news in, in the media that during the OSBA conference, there was a van from Tuskegee Valley that was actually in a bus accident where four students died in that accident. So, as we reflect on our Thanksgiving and the things that we're blessed, you know, with and we're grateful for, let's keep families from Tuskegee Valley in our prayers and thoughts because I can't imagine facing Thanksgiving with one less person at the table. And you never like to hear stories like this. So, our thoughts are with Tuskegee Valley schools. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers. I have a question. Kelly, I've, I've heard that one of the doors at the middle school got broken.
Yes.
Is that one of the doors that had the film on it?
Yes, it didn't get, so it didn't get sha, it shattered, but it did not break through. And that actually was about six, six weeks ago, eight weeks ago.
I suppose it's been that long.
Yeah, it's been a while. So, the side door, and it happened, we don't, we actually, there was an evening, I believe, an elementary performance there. It didn't happen then. We actually think it happened after the concert and obviously, before school started. The principal looked at all the footage and all we saw was a black cat in the area. So, we still don't know who busted the door. But anyway, it was busted. It did not, it shattered, but it did not break on either side. So, no glass to clean out, but certainly, a glass aimed to replace.
Okay, thank you. So, so after that, did they come back and?
So, actually, that door doesn't have the film on it.
Oh.
The interior doors.
So, it didn't shatter?
No, it did not shatter regardless. We don't, Curtis and I watched hours of video trying to figure out what happened to that door. There's a blind spot that has been fixed. We rearranged the cameras now. Nothing will happen in that entrance hopefully, now that we have the camera fixed. But we couldn't see what happened.
So, are we adding film to that door?
The interior doors of that entrance way have the film on it.
Oh, so there's two sets of doors?
Yeah. There's two sets of doors. Yeah. So, the outside doors where it happened, we didn't put film on that one?
Correct. The, the interior doors going into the building have the film on it.
Well, that door did what it's supposed to do anyway.
Yeah.
It didn't shatter and that's why you have got that kind of glass in that door.
Correct. We, the quote that we got, they are going to prep it to put film on it if we do decide that we've got safety dollars. If we do want to do some additional film to use safety grant money that we have to earmark by certain times, it will be prepped for that. That, they're going to come fix that. They, they've got that part of the last order and they're working on that. So, it'll be fine.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have items from the board members. Mr. York, would you like to start?
Sure. I'll pass out these student success brochures. This is a pamphlet that went, that goes out to families. I only have one, so you guys can take a look at it and pass it down. We, we considered, accepted some information on several building projects over there. One of them being in addition to the biomedical center on Interstate 75. The other is a new building or renovate and renovation of facility at the Middletown Airport. And looking at remodeling, adding to a program in machines. Not machine trades, that would be the wrong term, but it's, it's in the machine area development. So, engineering type thing. It's going to be somewhere in Hamilton, but it'll be in, in cooperation with Miami University. We, we also get some legal updates and ideas. I'll pass this on to you, Kelly, because it's three or four pages long. But just some, I, what I think is interesting in this is, of course, you know about the renaming of Department of Education and changing their responsibilities and so forth. But one of the really neat things in here is that there is a House Bill 240 out there right now that's would establish the ability of schools to have a school chaplain. And so, you know, it might be in addition to that mental health piece that you're looking at. I can't think of anything better than to have students go talk to Fred for an hour or so every day. But to permit public schools employ chaplains, provide support services. So, it's a neat idea. I hope it goes. And a bunch of good stuff to them.
Thank you, Mr. York. Mr. Messerschmidt?
So, Kelly, you talked on, you talked on a little bit earlier about the Veterans Day at the middle school. And I got an opportunity to attend the middle school Veterans Day celebration with my daughter. And I was also invited to go to EIS as well as the, as the high school. I'm not saying this as a board member, but I'm saying as a father, a veteran that lives in the community, I'm very proud of what these schools do, you know, around the military and Veterans Day and just all the programs and stuff that we have in place. So, it was just really awesome to see that. There were a lot of people at those events that were touched by it. And I think a lot of people really appreciated the effort that was put into it. I know there was a tremendous amount of work on all three of those buildings. And I'm sure there was in the other two as well. So, just appreciate everybody's support in doing what they do around Veterans Day.
Thank you, Mr. Messerschmidt. Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Ashcraft?
I don't have anything else to add.
Don't have anything else to add this evening?
I have one other thing that Mark, Mark and I were part of and Michael was part of. We were, we attended the community Thanksgiving program that was here. And it was on the nineteenth of November.
Full house, wasn't it?
One of the vocal groups from Edgewood Elementary sang and Mark and Michael.
Mark sang?
Huh?
Mark sang?
He did not sing, but he, he did, he and Michael, we, we had to do a responsive reading. And they, they really did a fantastic job. I think it was very impressive to have three big ugly men up here reading scripture. And I think it was impactful that that happened. So, it was a fun experience. It was good.
Good point. It's cool. Thank you. Thank you guys for doing that. So, at this time, I'm going to look for a motion to move to executive session. For, for the following reasons. Consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Discuss collective or discuss collective bargaining match. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
All right, we are back. Eight twenty. What do we do? This time, I'm going to look for a motion to approve the personnel items as presented.
As amended.
As amended. Did we amend? Sorry. As amended. Mr. Pressler, do I have a second? Mr. York? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
My motion carries five zero.
I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pressler? Mrs. Bowers, would you call a roll, please?
Mr. Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gabber?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashcraft?
Yes.
Mr. York?
Yes.